Scheduled meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Inglewood, Colorado. Would you like to call this meeting to order? And the first item on the agenda after calling it to order is the approval of the minutes from July 21, 2020. Would there be such a motion?
I'm sorry, we do have to do a roll call.
Oh, pardon me. Please call the roll.
Kate Townley?
Here.
Daryl? Daryl, are you muted?
Here.
Thank you. Colin?
Here.
Michelle?
Here.
Judy?
Here.
Kate Fuller?
Here.
Diane?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Carl?
Here.
And Chair Freemeyer?
Here. And I believe Michelle has joined us as well?
Yeah, I called her.
Okay, okay, good deal. Excellent. First item on the, we do have a quorum, and so let's begin. The first item on the agenda of any action is the approval of the minutes from July 21, 2020. Would there be such a motion?
I'm moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Kate Townley?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Kate Fuller?
Abstain.
Diane?
Yes.
Noel?
Abstain.
And Chair Freemeyer?
Abstain. Motion does carry. Okay. Item number three on the agenda is a public hearing regarding Title 16 floodplain regulations. Has a notice of public hearing been published?
It has.
Has the city received any written correspondence regarding this particular issue?
We have not.
Thank you. Certainly appreciate that at this point in time, we would like a motion to open the public hearing. Would there be such a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Seeing no objections, please call the roll.
Kate Townley?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Kate Fuller?
Abstain.
Diane?
Yes.
Noel?
Abstain.
And Chair Freemeyer?
Abstain. Motion does carry. Okay. Item number three on the agenda is a public hearing regarding Title 16 floodplain regulations. Has a notice of public hearing been published?
It has.
Has the city received any written correspondence regarding this particular issue?
We have not.
Thank you. Certainly appreciate that at this point in time, we would like a motion to open the public hearing. Would there be such a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Seeing no objections, please call the roll.
Kate Townley?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Kate Fuller?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
And Chair Freemeyer?
Yes. With that, we'll open the public hearing. What we want to do first is have the staff report regarding the floodplain revisions. I believe everybody has a copy of this. If we could ask staff to go through this in detail, that would be just great.
Devin, you're muted, and I'll need to swear you in.
Am I, am I all muted now?
Yes. Okay. Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear affirmative the penalty of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes.
Please state your name and your position with the city.
Devin Keener, capital project engineer.
Thank you.
Would you like me to move forward and give you kind of a synopsis of the background of this project?
Yep.
Please.
Okay, sure. So, a few months ago FEMA had reached out to us, and they suggested that we incorporate auto-adoption language into our Inglewood ordinance. This ordinance would allow for our verbiage to reflect auto-adoption language for all of FEMA's future floodplain updates. So basically, what this will do, this ensures that we will always be in compliance with the latest FEMA floodplain study. And this helps us to be more easily, this helps us maintain status and FEMA's community rating system. And the community rating system is what lowers the city's flood insurance rates. The most recent floodplain change was on Big Dry Creek. That floodplain shrunk from the existing, so no property was affected by the most recent FEMA update. And that is all I have, is just a report on this ordinance here. I don't know if you want to go into any questions on it, Bobby, you want to answer?
Before we open up to the public regarding comment, would there be any clarification questions for Devin regarding this particular motion or the public hearing before us? Just clarifying questions. Yes, Kate?
Just procedurally, this would be, when we come up with a motion for this, this would be to recommend to city council to approve. This wouldn't be our decision?
So we need planning, we need planning and zoning's approval, and then we'll bring it up to council.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to clarify, you're correct, Kate. This is like another, any other Title 16 amendment, commission recommends approval, and there should be findings of fact. Okay?
Any other clarification questions before we open up to the public? I, I have one, just as a point of clarification. So, we'll say that the map changes, and it affects three property owners, okay? Would those three property owners be given the same type of notice tomorrow as what they would be today? And secondly, would they have some notion that, or some ability to say, yes, I agree with this, or no, I don't? So that FEMA doesn't just have a Fiat, car blocks Fiat over the city?
Yep. So, the property owner would be notified of the change that is coming. Typically, I believe it's a couple of months in advance. I don't know if Tim Hoos wants to speak more to the exact dates on the notification there, but I don't believe that you have a say in, in the updated FEMA floodplain. When they create the study, that is the new regulated area, and then you would have to go to FEMA, and you would have to contest the study on your own if you disagreed with that. So you can get mapped into a floodplain, or you can get mapped out of a floodplain, but you would be notified before that happened.
Okay, so, so that, that process hasn't changed, is that correct?
It's the same as it's always been, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other points of clarification?
Okay. If I, if I have a question, a point of clarification on the changes that we're proposing, is that at this time now, or would that be at a later time?
Normally what happens here, Colin, that's an excellent question. Staff will give a report. We will then ask any questions relative to clarifying, so we understand the, the facts of what's before us, if you will. So what's being proposed, in this case by FEMA, to the City of Inglewood. Now, you may have a, an opinion that you'd like to say, I think that, which is fine. So what we'll do is first, before we, before we register what I think, if you will, the I think, what we'll do is we will register, what does the public think, so that we can take public input, comments, and that may change, in fact, what any commissioner is thinking. Is that helpful?
It is. I do have one more point of clarification then.
Please.
Are both of these changes recommended by FEMA, or just the first change that was recommended about the auto-adoption, and then the additional change that we're proposing was recommended by staff, or was that recommended by FEMA also?
I'm just aware of the auto-adoption change to the language. What was the, what was the second change that you had, that you were talking about there?
The addition of culverts and, where'd it go? Culverts and drainage openings?
Oh, okay. Yes, I believe that that was actually legal language added by the city attorney, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, clarifying questions? Yes, Kate?
And Devin, I think you already spoke to this, but, so it's up to, if FEMA were to change the maps, it's up to a property owner to dispute that, or talk to FEMA about, you know, what their findings are. So that doesn't change in terms of like, are, when we've had to update the ordinance over the years to adopt the new map, it's not like the Planning and Zoning Commission in the past has had a way to dispute what the map is, or what FEMA was saying. That, our process with that wouldn't necessarily change either, other than it's auto-adopting. Does that make sense?
Yes, you're correct on that. All we're doing here is just changing the language to auto-adopt. Otherwise, we have to go back in every year or two, and we have to continually change the date in our current ordinance. And this is the process that we have to do. We have to go through planning and zoning, then we have to have two council meetings. So to keep us from having to do that in the future, we're just going to go ahead and do the auto-adoption language, and this will just make it easier in the future. If we don't, if we don't catch this, we'll, we'll always have the, the latest FEMA floodplain in our language, and that way we don't risk, you know, getting out of the CRS, Community Rating System, which is what lowers our floodplain rates in the City of Inglewood. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other clarifying questions? Okay.
I have one.
Yes.
Are there other communities you're aware of that do the auto-adoption? Do most communities auto-adopt the language, or is this sort of standard practice, or, I'm just sort of curious how Inglewood stands currently relative to other communities?
Yes, so FEMA is actually trying to get all the communities to move to auto-adoption. Our language right now is reflecting more of what Aurora, the City of Aurora has in their ordinance. There are some communities that still, that still don't have the auto-adoption language. But yeah, FEMA is trying to move all the communities towards this language. And this is why we got this notification, I believe it was back in March.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any other clarifying questions? All right, seeing none, I would like to move to the portion of the public hearing where we hear from the public. We do have, given the unusual circumstances, hopefully this does not become the new normal. We do have a couple of areas we need to check on. So first, Shelley, do we have anyone present at the Civic Center who wishes to speak regarding this issue of the change to Title 16 as it relates to the floodplain regulations as discussed this evening?
Hi, board, there are no public in person to speak.
Shelley, we certainly appreciate that. Seeing that no one is there, Nancy, do we have anybody virtually who wishes, who wishes to speak either on the phone, or on this particular Zoom call?
We do not.
Okay. So we are not aware of anybody from the public. We've asked both at the Civic Center, and also virtually, to see if somebody's either on the phone or on Zoom to speak at this public hearing. Seeing none, then we will take comments from commissioners at this point. Anybody care to comment on this? Please.
I did notice that, so we're adding, after, in the warning and disclaimer liability on page three of the staff report, we say, larger floods may occur on occasions, or flood height may be increased by man-made obstacles or natural causes. I believe some other jurisdictions stopped there, whereas we kind of continued on and added such as ice jams, bridges, culvert, drainage. Is there any thought to just not having that language in there, is to not maybe restrict it, or, you know, then we're not coming back, and like, oh, and, you know, some inlet clogged, or some other, and maybe that's covered by the drainage openings, but I'm wondering if there's any thought process to, to not have that additional language in there?
I believe that we wanted to add as much language as we could after the 2018 flood, just to cover Inglewood, you know, from any potential liability in that ordinance. And that language was suggested, I believe, by our city attorney, Dugan, who took a look at that, and he felt that that was best. If he feels that he wants to speak more to that, then, then I guess, you know, he can today, but that's my understanding. Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any other, any other questions, concerns, thoughts, anything? I'll just offer that I believe it's a, if FEMA is recommending this, and that presumably aid and/or insurance could be available to persons that are in the floodplain, I do believe it's in the city's best interest, and frankly, in the citizens' best interest, for the city to adopt such, such recommended language that FEMA would have, because after all, they are the ones that are going to be managing the emergency, if you will, if there is a flood, and they are going to be the ones that are going to allow insurance to be purchased in floodplains. And so, we don't want to be a city, if you will, potentially, we miss it by a month, and we end up with an unexpected flood event. We don't want to be in that position. So to me, it seems to be very reasonable to move forward, and prudent, frankly, and I would recommend the city council do that. Any other comments regarding this before we close the public hearing? Seeing none, I would ask that there be a motion to close the public hearing at this time? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm moved.
There's a motion? For a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Seeing no discussion regarding this, please call the roll.
Kate Townley?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Kate Fuller?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
And Chair Freemeyer?
Yes. Motion does carry. Oh, pardon, pardon me, Nancy.
No, you're fine.
Motion does carry. At this time, chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the city council the adoption of the language as it's been presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there such a motion?
I move to present the language as, as presented to the council.
A second.
We've got a motion and a second, a discussion? Okay, for, I'll just offer this for reasons previously stated. I think it's all in the best interest of the city and the citizens, and all concerned in the surrounding communities. So we certainly appreciate staff's moving forward. Please call the roll.
Kate Townley?
I vote yes. I think this helps streamline some of our processes, and keeps us in compliance for the community rating system.
Daryl?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Kate Fuller?
I vote yes. Inglewood kind of has, you know, two years ago, we had that really bad flood, so I know that's really important to all the citizens and everyone in Inglewood, so I think it's a good idea. And I think the auto-adoption will make it easier for staff and for everyone involved, so, yeah.
Diane?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
And Chair Freemeyer?
Yes, for, for reasons previously stated, I think it's a great move for the city, and it'll help to streamline processes, which is certainly is a good thing in this, this particular case. So, thank you, everybody, for participating in the public hearing. Next item on the agenda is item number four, staff's choice.
Staff does not have anything to report tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Wade. Next item, Dugan, attorney's choice.
Well, like Wade, I have nothing to report this evening.
All right, excellent. Appreciate that, Dugan. Next item, commissioners' choice. I'm just going to go around the horn here, as I see them on my screen. Kate Townley?
I guess one quick question with the town hall. We're allowed, all of us, or as many as we can, to participate in that town hall? That's not considered like a different quorum, or anything like that?
You're correct, Commissioner Townley. Everybody would be able to participate.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Kenton?
Nothing, nothing for me, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Adams?
Nothing for me either.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Mr. Aggerty?
I guess just to follow up on that, is there anything that we need to do to prepare for the, the town hall meeting, or are we just, there is bystanders, are we there as council members, or commission, commission, commissioners?
You're, you're free to participate as citizens of Inglewood, if you like to provide comments, in addition to what we might have spoke about a few weeks ago in that forum. You're certainly welcome to do so. I wouldn't, I would advise against participating as a commission member, but simply a citizen of Inglewood.
Okay, thank you. And then one other follow-up, just saying thank you, Wade, for the information that you sent over regarding some of the planning and zoning discussions that are going on, and I think it was APWA, or APA, maybe?
AP, APA, correct. Yep. On the, on the housing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
Just very interesting articles to, to be able to read and go through, so.
Great, great. You're welcome.
Excellent. Ms. Austin?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lipowski, I probably just butchered that up.
Oh, no, you got it perfectly.
Yes.
Slovak, not Polish.
I knew that.
Thank you, Wade, for sending that over, also. I was curious with regards to the town hall, do we have a sense of participation?
This, this is going to be a, a primarily telephone town hall, so what has happened is that we've contracted with a company out of Golden, that this is their business, and so they have purchased voter registration lists, and through that list, they have approximately 10,000 phone numbers, which they will be sending texts to, asking for people to participate. And what that, those, once you get the text, you will say yes or no, and then if you say yes, you'll be taken to a, a listening platform, where we will be doing question and answer, and polling, and that sort of thing. So hopefully, that's a really good start, in terms of the approximate 10,000 phone numbers, but we've also sent this out to all boards and commissions and council, as well as developers that we've worked with in the past. And, and so we've got another 200 to 300 emails that we sent that to, just for personal contacts. We're hopefully reaching a good number of citizens, and hopefully those citizens will, will feel that this isn't an intimidating kind of town hall, and feel free to ask questions and give us their thoughts on the current code.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Atkins?
When listening to the joint session with city council, I was not surprised at the, the high level of discourse, and, you know, especially the comments from my fellow commissioners. It definitely got me excited about the process that we're going to go through for Title 16 upcoming. And I appreciated the book and resource recommendations, so anyone who has more, you know, I'm definitely always looking for more good materials.
Excellent. Certainly appreciate that. Diane, you raised your hand, I assume, given your background, you're a repertoire of books and information.
I like books a little bit. I can send some, I can send some that I was looking at after, after that conversation as well.
Excellent. Certainly appreciate that. Thank you. Kate Fuller?
No comments.
Okay. Judy?
Sorry, I've been having internet connection problems. Two things. One, I wanted to say I participated in the town hall with the police department, and the company who does that runs those incredibly well. I, I was impressed with that. I was on the phone, because that was the only way I could do it, and I guess they have some live streaming too, you can do on the internet, but I was unable to do it that way. But it was incredibly well-run, and the polling, I thought was good. The second thing I wanted to let you all know about is there is a virtual job fair that the city, the chamber, and Arapahoe Douglas Works is going to put on, on September 1st. If you, Swedish is going to be one of the employers that's looking. So, if you know a business in Inglewood, or you know somebody who is searching for a job, there'll be a bunch of stuff on social media, but we're trying to get the word out, it's coming up pretty quickly, things like that tend to happen. If you need a, a link, I can send that to you, but if you know somebody in Inglewood that's hiring, every employer will get their own room. I'm not sure how it all is going to work, but they have a limit of 20 that they can accommodate, employers. And then employee, potential employees also need to sign up. It should be a pretty simple process.
Excellent.
There'll be more coming out this week.
And is that job fair through the chamber?
Well, it's in, it's in partnership with the chamber, the city, and Arapahoe Douglas Works.
Okay. And that information is available on each one of the websites?
Yes.
Excellent, excellent. Certainly appreciate that. Anything else? I just want to finish with this. I saw, first of all, Michelle, thank you so much. I was, I was unable to attend the last meeting in our family. We had somebody's 31st birthday, and it was an awesome celebration, so that was a lot of fun. That was actually my 31st, so I appreciate you being chair, and I heard nothing but great comments from a few commissioners, saying you did an excellent job, so thank you so much.
You're absolutely welcome, no problem.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. The next thing I received today in the mail, hopefully you can see this, if you haven't received this, it's a postcard, okay? And the postcard is from the City of Inglewood, and it's, it's regarding their, the proposal for a flow-it-forward, referring to both potable water and sanitary sewer systems, both to reduce the INI, to ensure that we have clean, sustainable water for years to come. And where I think that, that hits the city of Inglewood twofold. Number one, we have a particular, when we talk about sanitary sewers, we have a particular notion that they are one-ways. And this is the opportunity for the city to take proactive action, to be able to, for a nominal fee every month, to be able to ensure that, in fact, that need is met of one-ways. Number two, with regard to potable water, say no more, it's just important, okay, if we're going to be a sustainable, viable community in the future for decades to come. It, it occurs to me, as we talk about development moving forward in various areas, redevelopment of downtown, redevelopment of other areas, infrastructure needs, many of those items that, that we touch through Title 16 directly affect what goes underneath our street. And to me, it seems like we should be involved at some level to understand what level of infrastructure have we done to rebuild that infrastructure under the street, before a developer comes in and puts the development, or the redevelopment, on that street, or right next to that street? And it just seems to me that we can, we can dovetail our planning, and developers, and staff's entire effort to be complimentary to the city council as they move forward. So I'd like to commend the city council on bringing this before, people in the near future are having this before them, and I'd also like to challenge us to keep that in mind, to think about what don't we see, but what's critically important, again, with the expectation of, A, I can drink this water, and B, what I'm flushing is a one-way. It goes away, okay? And it goes to the right place. So it's as simple as that, but I just want to end with that, and I think it's a, a nice thought to end with, a little clean water. And to me, it seems like we should be involved at some level to understand what level of infrastructure have we done to rebuild that infrastructure under the street before a developer comes in and puts the development or the redevelopment on that street, or right next to that street? And it just seems to me that we can, we can dovetail our planning and developers and staff's entire effort to be complimentary to the city council as they move forward. So I'd like to commend the city council on bringing this before people in the near future are having this before them. And I'd also like to challenge us to keep that in mind, to think about what don't we see, but what's critically important, again, with the expectation of, A, I can drink this water, and B, what I'm flushing is a one-way. It goes away. Okay? And it goes to the right place. So it's as simple as that, but I just want to end with that. And I think it's a, a nice thought to end with, a little clean water. So with that, seeing no other comments, thank you so much for everybody being here, and I look forward to seeing you in the next meeting. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.